I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Select Board for Monday, November 4th. Thank you for coming, everyone. I anticipate a pretty short meeting tonight. We will start with our regular announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by public comment period. Under the Town Manager's Report, I think we really only have one item, which is an update on the fiscal '21 budget process. Under other business, we had hoped to have a discussion around domestic violence, which unfortunately has been postponed two weeks to the 25th as folks were unable to attend.
That's actually three weeks, I think. Two weeks is... it's two meetings, but...
We will be having that on the 25th, however many weeks that is. We then have our ongoing issues list. I need to have a brief conversation with folks and look for some consensus on the Florence Roach, on a couple items there. We then have liaison reports in a set of minutes. We will not be meeting in joint session with the Board of Water Commissioners, either in executive session or in open session. There's some confusion right now as to what process DEP is in discussions with us around, whether it's a order of consent or something else. And that helps us to determine whether we should be meeting in open session or executive session. So until we get that figured out with council, we're not meeting in any session. Does anyone have any announcements?
I just want to remind the board... I'm sorry. Sorry. I just want to remind the board this Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Center in West Groton, you will be having your work session to continue your review of your policies. I sent you some updates today from Town Council, so I think we're in pretty good shape to have a good meeting on Thursday beginning at 6:00.
Great. Thank you. John?
The town will celebrate Veterans' Day on Monday, the 11th. The event will occur at the fire station and it will begin at 11:00 AM. All are welcome.
Very good. Anyone else? Yeah, can you just grab a microphone?
I should see if I go on my friend. I just would like to thank, thank the board for all his support. It was great seeing him on Saturday. There were more people when I got with... we show up at four past 12. I was like, "Oh, my God." But the place built up really fast, standing in the morning. Josh, I know you couldn't make it. You get Amy in the car and you come on over and I'll give you a personal tour, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
I shall be there.
Also, I would like to... I would like to let you guys know that you have a couple of people who are employed with the town that are dedicated to their job, and one being Kathy Shelp and one being Mark Hatad. And I would like to thank both of them and I would like to just make that known. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's been a long road.
It has.
Thank you.
Glad you're back at the new house. To follow up on that, Saturday's event at the Senior Center, I'd say there was well over 150 people there. I thought it was outstanding and it was a nice opening ceremony.
It was lovely.
Dedication.
Absolutely. It's a gorgeous building and we're looking forward to seeing all the vibrancy come to it as the seniors return and as events start to wrap it up and everything else. It's very... a long time coming and well earned. Does anyone else in the public have anything to... I know, I'm almost afraid to ask. All right. Mark, under the... yeah, I'm sorry.
This is the time for some questions, comments, whatever, from the board?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the correspondence recently, there was a letter from DCR about the Forest Legacy Program. They were asking for a letter of support for their application to expand the forest legacy areas. And I guess I thought that this is a good thing and we should send them a letter of support. But I don't know if that needs to be more discussed more, or...
So I, yeah, I too read that, as I'm sure others did. I have no real understanding of what the program is, or does, or what we would be committing to.
I turned that over to Tom Delaney and asked him for a recommendation, so I'll leave it up to the board. If you want me to draft something for your review, I can do that.
Tom Delaney?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, and you didn't get Nick into that?
No, I should probably get Nick involved, too.
I was gonna say Nick or Takashi would... it seems to me.
He's the true one.
Is there a deadline in that letter?
Yeah, there's something in there. I think it's January. No, no, I was thinking something else.
Well, it's... the letter said it would allow access to another funding source for potential forest conservation projects that involve willing private landowners.
Then when you go and look at towns within Massachusetts who have a forest legacy area, Groton is... has an asterisk there. And I don't know where that area is or who's...
I thought that those were towns that were already part of the program.
Yeah, indicates towns added or expanded in the current proposal.
Right, that they're trying to give us.
I did not know what that meant either, whether that meant that in this... if this current proposal passes, Groton will be...
That was how I read it.
Added, or Groton will be expanded. I...
Well, this little map shows Groton.
It's not clear.
Let me talk to... let me follow up with Tom, Nick and Takashi and bring something back to the board.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Also, I guess this is the appropriate time. I happened to run into a member of the newly appointed Capital Planning Advisory Committee at an event over the weekend, who mentioned that the... that the first meeting has been scheduled, but that one member wasn't going to be able to make it for that. Is that...
He's gonna call in, which is completely appropriate. First meeting is November 12th at 4:00 PM. We're starting the budget process and I think it's important that the committee gets started as soon as possible. So four members could make it, one can call in, so we're gonna do our kickoff meeting at that meeting.
I just... I think it's great that the person who couldn't make it can call in. I think that in general, it's certainly preferable to have all the members of the committee present for the first meeting.
I imagine, Mark, at that meeting that they will set their schedule somehow for the next... so that... yeah, hopefully that meeting will turn out to be kind of an anomaly.
I'm just trying. I was, you know, I wanted to get them started as soon as possible so that we could have input on this year's budget process. And, you know, trying to schedule meetings sometimes can be difficult, so when four members could make it, I went ahead and scheduled the meeting.
Sounds good. I had a question kind of around that process. I guess, Josh, I would direct it to you as you were kind of chairing at that point. As I went through the minutes, I was kind of reviewing the folks who had been appointed to that meeting, to that board. And I was a little bit concerned or wondering with Mr. Koski, where he's an employee of the golf course. What was the discussion around conflict?
There was no specific discussion, other than that they had to go to the town clerk and fill out the appropriate forms, you know, whether it's conflict of interest, sexual harassment forms and the various ones, once they got sworn in, as well as open meeting law information. So there was no specific discussion by any board member relative to conflict, is my recollection of the discussion.
Okay. I was just struck by, I would think, the fact that he's a town employee at the golf course would mean that he would need to excuse himself, certainly from anything discussion around the golf course. But then to me, kind of being that all the money to be discussed is in one hopper, I'm not sure how he can participate in discussions.
Plus, he's a part-time employee, works one day at the counter there.
It still would be a conflict.
It's still...
As an employee of the country club, he would probably have to recuse himself from issues relative to the country club. I think.
You know, as it relates specifically to the country club, I think you bring up a good point. If you're talking about the budget, capital improvements, things along those lines, from that, I think he should be advised that he would need to recuse himself. But as for, it's all one pool of money. Whenever we come forward with warrant articles, they're broken apart in terms of explanation in so much as the funding that would go to, say, triplex mowers or to golf carts, things like that, are broken apart, a separate motion. So I think it should be suggested, as long as he's gonna continue in that capacity, that he really would need to recuse himself in that issue.
But how would it work, or how would you envision it working in terms of... you know, I assume that this group would look at, okay, what are the priorities to put on for three years from now? How would he...
You mean in general? It would be part of the discussion to prioritize all our assets.
Right. So to me, in terms of... where there's a conflict in one area, I'm not... I don't understand how he could partake in kind of any of that discussion.
Well, I could see how the conflicts, as it relates to future purchases by the country club, he would recuse himself, but I wouldn't see the need for him to recuse himself if we're talking about, you know, DPW-related expenditures or proposed expenses, or Parks Department or anything else outside of the country club.
Go ahead, John.
But I do think when the committee gets to prioritizing what projects get done, he would need to recuse himself if there's any projects on... for the country club.
Yeah, that could end up being problematic.
Right. And I think that's partly where your concern was.
Yeah, and I didn't know whether there was some discussion or...
No, it was none.
So, Mark, how would we... I mean, is this something that we would...
Should we discuss the first meeting?
Well, I think I'll put it... I'll bring it up at the first meeting and have the committee discuss it and ask Mr.... ask Mr....
Koski.
Koski. Ask Mr. Koski if he feels that's gonna be an issue and talk to him. He himself has to make the decision whether or not he would recuse himself from issues. We can't tell him you have a conflict. So maybe, I don't think that's... you know, now that I'm saying this out loud, I don't think it's appropriate to have it discussed at the committee. Maybe I should give Mr. Koski a phone call, if it's okay with the board, and talk to him about the potential conflict.
Yeah, I don't remember...
And make him aware of it.
Well, and if he can go to the Ethics Committee in Boston and get it, have a discussion.
And I don't remember what he said, the specifics about the job, other than I thought it was Monday morning a week. It was pretty small.
Fridays.
And in the golf...
Still doesn't change the issue that Allison's bringing up.
But it... I guess I'm realizing that that's why probably none of us actually picked up on that, because it was such a minor job.
Yeah, Mark, I guess before you talk to him, will you just have a quick conversation with council?
Yep.
And see what they... he recommends, or how we... I'm not... I'm more concerned that in six or nine months, there's some sort of perception of concern that then becomes problematic.
And I had one other point, which I was gonna bring up in our meeting with the water commissioners, but obviously we're not having that meeting. Also, this weekend was at the... an event where State Senator Jamie Eldridge was there and I had a brief conversation with him. And I mentioned that we have this manganese issue that we're dealing with in our water. And he said that they had just passed a, I don't know, an extra part of the budget, specifically with some funding for clean water and that perhaps there might be a potential there of some money from the state in mitigating the manganese issue. So I wanted to pass that on. Mark, can you pass that on?
I will. Will do.
Thank you. Mark, do you wanna jump into the...
Yeah, my Town Manager's Report is very lengthy tonight, so let's get right at it. Last week, when I sent out the instructions, I sent Bud a copy at his request after the meeting and he pointed out that I failed to add to the instructions that we were gonna have the new major initiatives section. So I adjusted it and I added this paragraph E, saying there'll be a new section in the budget, that the Select Board and the FinCom have requested that we provide a section of long-term forecasts, fifty thousand in one year, a hundred thousand over three years, that we would include in the five-year projection to the Finance Committee. And then I gave a specific instruction and there'll be a form that asks them to provide a narrative and a budget estimate for those. So I changed those two sections and I just wanted to let you know that I did that. I sent it back to Bud. He was all set with it. I assume the board is all set with it. Tomorrow morning, we have our budget kickoff with the department heads. Unless there's objection, that's gonna be what I'm gonna do.
Yeah. Any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I remember the hundred thousand part over eighty-three-year period. Was fifty thousand the number?
Fifty thousand in any given year, a hundred thousand over a three-year period.
So I wondered about those figures also. Does that pretty much encompass any added staff person?
Pretty much. Pretty much. Because when you look at an employee in the town, the average salary is... it could be starting salary anywhere from thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the position at that level. And then you add benefits and everything, Becky, it would put it over fifty thousand dollars.
Or puts it over the hundred thousand in three years.
In the three-year period, yes. So it would affect that, absolutely. And I think that was the main objective of this particular initiative. Because usually when you're talking about changes in departments, you mostly press out. Yes, Josh?
There was something in here where we talked about where one of the budgets is gonna be a level budget. And in the vicinity of that, it talked about doing something with the schools, sharing some expenses with the school district.
Yep.
And I just wanna make sure that the word "sharing" is thought and understood to be equal sharing.
Yeah, it is. And I reached out to the school superintendent, as I said, I think I told the board this last week, and they're gonna have a meeting right away to talk about how we're gonna do it. So if there's an issue, we'll obviously report back to the Finance Committee, School Committee, Select Board. But I anticipate outstanding cooperation from our school district.
I certainly believe that if it isn't an even share and for some reason the folks thinks the town share should be bigger, that that's an issue that comes to the Select Board.
And the Finance Committee.
And the Finance Committee.
Could not agree with you more. One additional change, as asked or directed or discussed, you guys could pick the word. Last week, I've added the FY17 expanded, so you have three years history that will be in the forms. That's it.
Any other questions or comments, folks?
Into... if it's okay with you, Alice, I'll get right into the ongoing issues discussion.
Actually, can I just make a comment about the domestic violence discussion that we have postponed? Just for the benefit of the public, the purpose of this discussion will be to talk about, are there efforts or resources that the town could do more towards this issue? And so if there's anyone out there who has ideas about that, I would really invite you to get in touch with me and let me know, because we're just kind of looking for those ideas at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Senior Center Building Project final counting. I went over my proposed form with Allison, when I met with her last week. The way I'm gonna provide it to you, it's basically gonna be a breakdown by category of how we spent the money, total budget account, you can see where the bills went and you'll see how much money's left over and things like that. I'm waiting for the final change order and final payment to Nelco before I'm gonna give that to you. So it's in process. I think you were happy with the format, Allison. I think it made sense. So the board will get that as soon as I pay that final invoice. Yes, Josh?
Can you also see if you can get in-kind contribution lists, not necessarily with each individual donor, but the total amount of money that the Friends of the Seniors, the Council and Agent collected?
They gave me a check on Saturday. The Friends of the Groton elders gave me a check on Saturday for a hundred thousand dollars. That has been turned over, as I was directed to, to the accountant. For some reason, they didn't want me walking out of the building with that, Gail. I don't know why. So anyway, they did turn over a hundred thousand dollars. And then there was another hundred and ninety thousand dollars in in-kind that they have received. We received ninety-two thousand dollars from the state for the generator. We received a donation for programming from the... I'm having a brain... River Court residences, thank you, Gail, River Court residences. And then they handed out a pamphlet at the thing on Saturday that listed all the donors and the amounts of money, ranges of money that they donated. So we do have that, Josh. I can get that to you.
No, I just think that that's a nice thing to have, the hundred thousand and the one hundred and ninety thousand, because, you know, getting almost three hundred thousand dollars off of a five-million-dollar project is a significant amount of money.
Yeah, Maron gave a very good speech on that.
And that really needs to be recognized, because without that, it would have been more expensive to the taxpayers.
Yep.
It was four hundred thousand.
Oh, four hundred thousand, yeah.
Can you just grab the microphone? Sorry.
So I think that a hearty thank you to everybody who contributed outside of the taxpayers on behalf of the Board of Select... excuse me, the Select Board from the town's perspective, I think should be acknowledged.
Absolutely. And it's ever-changing. When we left on Saturday, we still had... people were giving us checks on Saturday. So what you saw in that pamphlet is already old news. And, sorry. But we have that information for you, Josh.
That's wonderful.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gail. So we're working on that. The Prescott School Sprinkler System, tonight at the CPC meeting, I talked to Mary Jennings today and they're gonna be asking for a project and a placeholder for CPA money this year, for going out to bid again in the spring for the sprinkler system. So that project is ongoing. We talked about the water department. I have no new update on the MS4 permit. I have no new update on the polystyrene containers. With regards to the Green Communities Application, I sent an email to Becky and Allison this afternoon. I gave the board bad information last week. I had understood the process, that once we got accepted, then we would apply for the grants for the projects. I found out today that that's not the case. It's part of our application process. So we are going to schedule a meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks and I'm gonna ask Becky to participate. The committee we put together, which was Becky, Kevin Kelly, Takashi, Sherri Cursey from the schools, Tom Delaney and me. And we'll sit down with our consultant and we'll try to come up with some ideas of what to apply for. And I know, Becky, you've been thinking about it.
Yes. And John Geiger, when I ended up on that committee, I think there'd been discussion with you that you might be the alternate, because I'm gonna be away for some time in November. So if it ends up that I can't be there...
Up contact, John. Absolutely. So I apologize for the misinformation, but we're still on target to get our application in by the end of November. Everything's going well and so we will continue to work on that.
And I assume we're still trying to figure out when we wanna start that window, don't they?
Correct, yes. Well, that's one of the things, when we get the final energy audit, and she should be getting it this week, that's one of the timeframes that we would be looking at to figure out, do we go back one year?
Right.
Or do we start now? So we gotta figure out how to do that. Charter approval. John and I and Allison were exchanging emails this afternoon and I think we all approached Representative Harrington at Saturday's meeting to talk to her about the charter. There is some confusion going on in the House. And the confusion is the difference between a charter commission, a charter committee and the authority of the Select Board. What had happened was, the Charter Committee went through their process. They presented a charter, they voted to approve the charter. The Select Board voted to approve the charter and it went to town meeting. And town meeting approved it in April of 2017. And everything was off and running. Then, in the spring of 2018, while they were going through their approval process, this board decided that we wanted to change the name from Selectman to Select Board. So you voted on February 12th, I sent you the minutes today. You voted on February 12th to add an article to the town meeting warrant, which is totally within the authority of the Select Board. That's the problem that we're having with the state right now. They're confused with the process. This board voted on February 12th of 2018 to change your name from Selectman to Select Board, which you did, and you placed an article on the warrant for the 2018 Spring Town Meeting authorizing that change. You held a public hearing. I sent you evidence today that you advertised for that public hearing. And then the town meeting, the ultimate authority, voted to approve that special legislation. This is very similar to what the Selectman did back in 2010. Josh, you'll remember, when we first got the charter up and running, we had some changes that we wanted to make. John, you sat on that committee and we made some changes and the Selectman brought it forward. There was no Charter Committee. The Selectman brought it forward. This is the same thing. We're having a hard time explaining that to the House, that it doesn't matter what the Charter Committee thinks in this particular instance, because they were dissolved by the time you decided to become the Select Board. So I sent those minutes to Representative Harrington. She has them. John had some questions on whether or not we scheduled a public hearing. I sent evidence to you guys on that to explain that to you. And I'm hoping that the House understands that and passes it. Representative Harrington will be here on November 25th.
So doesn't the House of Representatives have their own legal counsel?
Yeah.
That we could communicate with?
We have been.
And that legal counsel should be able to attend the House meeting to explain it to them in easier terms than maybe has been explained previously.
Well, Town Council will get involved. And Town Council sent me an email the other day saying that he would get involved, but he wants this board to vote to authorize him to get involved. So I would just leave it where it is now? I don't know. I'd just leave it where it is right now and give me another couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks seems to become a couple of months, seems to become six months, real quick around here with the charter.
I understand. I understand your frustration, Josh.
But perhaps we should give Representative Harrington the opportunity to hear us and if nothing... you know, at that point, if it's still dragging, then maybe that's the time to ask her to...
Aren't they recessed, anyway, right now?
It would be a recess approval, anyway.
John?
I saw a message that I was copied on that came from Representative Harrington, where she forwarded your message of this morning to another representative.
Yeah, I sent that to the board, yep.
And it might behoove us to learn more about who that is, because he is either in front of others who are concerned or he is an individual who is concerned.
He is the Chair of the Committee on Third Readings, so he's kind of an important person.
Right. But that's a committee, as I understand it, of a couple of people.
Yep.
So all it is is two people. So maybe we can understand more about who he is and see whether the legislation guy from MMA or other sources can help us.
There is nobody in this room that wants to remove item G from the ongoing issues list more than me.
I'm not seeing it.
No, no, I agree. I agree.
There's another thread there we might be...
Yep, no, I agree. I'm gonna do that.
But to follow up on John's comment, John, probably there's nothing stopping anyone like you from contacting Ted, whoever he is.
But he's open to the public. He asked me.
He's a representative.
We wanna coordinate it with Sheila, but it might be worth asking her if you and one of the Selectmen or whoever could go in and meet with him, if that would help.
Right. It does seem like a silly thing that they're spending time on.
We've been known to do that.
So the next item, Mark, is the Florence Roach feasibility study, which I was gonna jump in on. So the Building Committee has now started looking at a very high level at kind of possible combinations of renovate, build, grade alignments, physical locations, et cetera, et cetera, with the intent, I think, first of starting to brainstorm every combination and permutation that we can kind of think of and then starting to rifle through them and determine what's really realistic. So a couple of alternatives have come up that would require kind of our approval or support because they're town-owned properties. And I just wanted to kind of get a consensus of where folks are at. And the first property is Prescott. You know, I would think that that parcel physically is probably too small. The location is difficult for this. The location is difficult for this, just as it would have been difficult for a senior center. And because it's on the historic registry, that that's complicating.
Well, and decades ago, and I do mean decades ago, when I was on the School Committee, our understanding was that Prescott would never be approved, that that property would never be, well, the Prescott building would never be approved for any SBA funding because the property was too small. And the property doesn't get any bigger even if you can find a way to remove the building from it, which I can't imagine they would want to undertake renovating that building. It can't meet any of their standards. I, I think it's a waste of that committee's time to even think about that parcel.
And that's what I kind of wanted to, to get a feel for. I agree. But, you know, again, I don't want in six or nine months someone saying, well, why didn't we consider this?
I agree too. How about that?
Okay.
Does everybody agree?
I was going to say, does anyone feel like the Prescott site should be considered?
No. I wouldn't recommend it, but they probably have to do it.
Unless we're going to build like a ten-story high-rise school.
I think that's the only way we work.
It is an available location and they need to decide.
It is. And, and I think that, you know, kind of the message I would take back to them is that the Select Board, because that's a town-owned building, didn't, and parcel, didn't feel that that's probably a viable use. Certainly if, if the Building Committee felt there were some compelling reason to consider it, but.
Come back and talk to us.
Yeah, I can't imagine what that would be at the moment. The other parcel that came up in a similar light is the Country Club. And to me, that parcel, although it's larger and has different concerns, it doesn't make sense in that carving off a piece of it for a school would render it non-functional as a country club. And that if we wanted to at some point down the line consider some other activity for that parcel or something else, it still probably makes sense to keep it intact at the time, at the time being.
And the, is, is there a sense of the total acreage that a school would want?
You know, that's a very good question.
Wasn't it ten acres for an elementary school? I mean, that used to be.
Allison, I don't remember.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, certainly the other sites that are being considered, there are two or three options on the middle school Florence Roach campus. So I don't have a good feel for kind of what, what the flow road parcel takes up currently.
So the Country Club's interesting from my perspective. I don't think we should mess with success at the moment personally and be throwing a school into the mix of a Country Club that's finally starting to hold its own and pull its own weight. Especially when the site plan approval for the high school was approved by the Planning Board back in, somewhere around 2008. There was a reserve parcel put on that property for the express purpose of putting an elementary school should the space be required in the future. And that was set aside. So from my perspective, while we can look at every town-owned property there is, my number one choice is what was originally proposed by having a foresight, you know, over a decade ago and use the reserve parcel on the high school site.
And that's certainly one of the sites that's in the fray because that's district-owned. Obviously, we don't, you know, that's a little cleaner. The committee will look at it. My concern at the high school site is, I don't know what, is, is the high school currently on septic or sewer?
They are connected to the sewer.
Okay.
Directly.
At the back of the site. It goes under the emergency access road down.
Right into Pepper directly.
And then the other concern I have there is water. I don't know what the water options are.
Seems like water is a big concern around town these days, and it's a valid one.
People have been drinking water out there for ten years and nobody died that I know of.
Oh, my goodness.
They haven't been drinking water out there for ten years because for several years they were bottled water.
Well, they had blood and water for some things and so forth, but it all worked.
It did.
And I haven't seen any updates since I left the School Committee in terms of what's going on with the water out there.
I believe the water fountains are currently labeled that they are safe to drink unless you are pregnant.
They can drink or cannot?
Can, unless you're pregnant.
That's really how the water fountains?
I believe so. But we've kind of gotten off track. I apologize. We're really talking about the Country Club here. So, I mean, I think, Josh, what you said makes sense to me. Carving off a piece of the Country Club, whether it's five acres, you know, it just doesn't really make sense at this juncture. Are you guys kind of making, is there any sense to this or is...
Well, and I guess, then the other question is, if a school could really need it, the entire amount of acreage of the Country Club, then it's a different question. Personally, I don't see it as a good, I, I think it confuses a lot of things. I think we have gone through many different efforts over the last, whatever it is, thirty, forty years. And, and in the more recent years, we've had, I know, two different committees that studied the Country Club and determined that the best piece of the Country Club was to keep it.
That's true.
And while there may be still some other tweaking of, and improving of what happens on the Country Club site, I don't see a, I think a school is just more confusion. And like Josh said, it's working finally. It's what we wanted.
Okay. So I want...
So I, so I guess the answer is I would be pretty uneasy about considering that parcel for school.
And that's basically what I was kind of anticipating, that the Select Board would indicate a lack of interest
Right.
in, in exploring either of those sites unless the committee wants to come back with a conversation around
Right.
a significant reason to consider them.
And maybe it's a lack of support for either one of those, that we're...
There are certainly political considerations and things that...
The board here, that we aren't looking to support building in either of those locations.
Right.
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 But, but the existing Florence Roach Middle School Campus and the existing high school campus, in my understanding, both of them have the potential for housing a new school or a renovated school. And those are the ones we should aim at.
Glad we had that conversation, Mark.
Yeah.
There is another site. We have eleven-acre reserve parcel on the backside of Serendin Farm under the control of the Board of Selectmen.
No. What's recently been reported to me at Affordable Housing Trust is that that parcel can be used for any purpose that community preservation funding could be used for.
I believe that the reserve parcel originally was there, and I think, Mark, you're going to need to check on that. But that board was, I'm sorry, that parcel of land came under the control of the Board of Selectmen, if my recollection serves me right, through a vote that occurred, oh, my goodness, probably eight or nine, ten years ago anyway. So I think you need to look into that because I'm not necessarily saying that that's the right site for a school. But if I was to consider any other site other than the existing middle school Florence Roach site and the high school, that that site, a heck of a place to put a school. Be a big playground out there.
Is any thought being given to, in relation to the site, the pros and cons of getting the School Committee on land that they own?
That's absolutely part of the process.
That they own the building instead of us owning the building and them deciding what they're going to do with it and so forth and so on?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we haven't gotten to a point where we're having those discussions, but I think that certainly, in my mind anyway, weighs in on these different sites and...
So just, Dawn sent out a email to all of you today, and I'm sure you probably received it, November 16th, eight o'clock at the center in West Grotton. It'll be the first of several public outreaches with the architect and the OPM and the Building Committee. We'll all be there. I hope you board members can, can make that Saturday morning if you're available. Becky, I think you're on time.
I will not be here.
But the 16th at eight AM.
Is that a posted meeting for us?
I wasn't planning on posting it, but I can if you'd like me to.
More than...
Yeah, probably post it and then we'll...
Two of us are going to be there. It's probably a good safety thing to do.
Will do.
That's at the center?
At the center, yeah, in West Grotton.
Have you been there?
Let me have a look.
The Grotton Center. Library roof repair continues to be going well. I spoke with our OPM clerk of the works the other day, and he thinks it's going to get done ahead of schedule. If you've driven by and look up at the work that they're doing on that, it's beautiful. It is beautiful work that this contractor is doing on that roof. So things seem to be going well there. With regards to the highway garage renovations, I had the opportunity to bring a couple of the Building Committee members out there on Thursday for tours. Both Mr. Geiger and Mr. Manugian came out and toured the facility. I think they were impressed, John?
Making good progress out there.
Very, very good progress. It's going to be nice.
Probably by now, all the walls on the larger building are up and they're ready to go to work on the roof.
Yep, absolutely. And it's, it's going well. Tomorrow at one o'clock, I'm going to be taking a couple of other members of the Building Committee out there. If any members of the board are available at one o'clock and you're interested in seeing that, you can meet me up at the Cow Palm Brook site at one o'clock to see it. But I would say the garage, the renovated garage is probably right on schedule and the new building is probably a week or two behind. So I'm not, I'm so happy with this contractor, I can't, I tell you that every time I give you an update. I'll stop and I don't want to jinx it.
So if you go tomorrow and there is some precipitation in the forecast for tomorrow afternoon, wear boots.
Oh, yeah. It is a construction site.
Pretty messy out there.
Yeah, it is a construction site. That is all I have. Allison, I don't think I have any other updates for you.
All right. Does anyone have liaison reports? All right. We have one set of minutes then from our regularly scheduled meeting of October 28th.
I move that we approve the Select Board meetings of Monday, October 28th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you all. We are adjourned.